Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the October seventeenth, twenty twenty four city council meet regular city council meeting to order. Suzanne, would you call the role, please?
Mayor Case.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nakai.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Gear.
Here.
Councilmember Harvey.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Thank you. If everyone would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. We're at item three ceremonies, presentations and appointments, and we have item A, police department awards and swearing in of new police officers. And welcome Chief Dicel and everyone else.
Thank you all very much.
Who's on patrol, chief?
Uh, don't worry, we're covered. Just the benefit of a four square mile city, any one of us can be where we need to be in real fast order.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk, Fraternal, thank you all very much again for the opportunity to come before you. Uh, I don't take these opportunities lightly, but I do want you all to know that we as a group appreciate the opportunity to come before you and spotlight the work that our folks aspire to do for you all day in and day out. Uh, this kind of stuff is probably still one of my career highlights to be able to spotlight the good work that our folks are doing. Uh, members of the community, uh, don't forget because you're not up front that this isn't as much for you as it is for them. Uh, we have aspired to become partners with you in every facet of the word. And we hope that you're finding that you're seeing those efforts as we work closely with not only our staff. And you'll see some of our partners here in the back of the room, uh, that you'll meet later uh, in the common cause to provide you the highest little service we can. So without further delay, so that Suzanne doesn't yell at me. Uh, because as you, if you're all laughing because you know the joke, uh, along with Captain Arsenal, Lieutenant Chris, I'd like to say again, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, Officer Martinez was going to be here for swearing in. But he's got a flat.
No.
And he, uh, he travels a little ways to get here and he is attending to that right now. So just found out about five minutes ago that regrettably he will not be here. However, I'm certain we'll be able to work in a future ceremony where he can also participate with his family in front of you. So, uh, we're going to do one swearing in tonight. And, uh, you're going to meet Sergeant Robbie Camilleri. And if you'd like to come up here and meet me in the front, we'll go ahead and get started. Yeah, we're going to go right in the center here and then I'm going to.
Stand on the edge.
Yeah, right. So.
The one that.
I'm going to do the best I can with a handful of stuff here. And I will ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I.
State your name.
Robert Camilleri.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect and defend.
That I will support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
The Constitution of the state of Colorado.
And the ordinances and charter.
And the ordinances and charter.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
Of the city of Woodland Park.
I will conduct myself with honesty and integrity.
I will conduct myself with honesty and integrity.
Will serve my community with bravery and honor.
Will serve my community with bravery and honor.
And will never betray the public trust.
And will never betray the public trust.
I will faithfully perform.
I will faithfully perform.
The duties of a Woodland Park Police Officer.
The duties of a Woodland Park Police Officer.
Which I affirm I am qualified for.
Which I affirm I am qualified for.
And now about to enter.
And now about to enter.
So with that officially welcome.
Thank you.
So our family, come on up. This is the, this is the fun part. So we have here and we can put this on the table.
Your turn?
Oh, there we go. Uh, we have here and we can put this on the table for now, but we do have your framed with office form for you to take. Uh, either find some office space or at home for it, uh, whatever you like. And then what we're going to do is the interesting part here. And as I told you in the back, uh, these pictures don't always mean a lot right now, but in 20 years they will. Uh, my dad, who was a forty-four year veteran law enforcement, told me the same thing. So, um, whoever's going to pin Sergeant Camilleri, take that, uh, badge there that of course I'm going to continue the running joke. Don't stick him straight in, just let it dangle there. There are paramedics. Oh, man, I'm outgunned on this one. In any event, Sergeant Robbie Camilleri. So we are going to take pictures toward the end. I'll have you guys go ahead and have a seat and we'll continue with what we've got going here. It is, it is. And then you're. There you go. All right. All right. Since I'm already here, I might as well stay here. Uh, short of hiring new folks, one of the biggest, uh, joys I get out of my job is being able to recognize and promote folks from within our ranks. Uh, that is not always an easy thing, especially when you get to learn new personalities and idiosyncrasies to find the right people to fit in and lead a department into the future to hopefully sustain itself long after I'm gone. Uh, that's always the goal. So tonight, uh, we're happy to have two of our folks uh, who you met not too long ago, who are now, uh, the recipients of a promotion to sergeant. So if Sergeant Reed and Sergeant Lang would help me come on up and we'll get them started. So. All right, where did Greg go? Oh, there he is. All right. Now you can't sneak anywhere. Okay? So what we have here are certificates for both of you to recognize your promotions. And effectively they read, uh, certificate of promotion presented in this case to Michelle Reed. And in that case to Sergeant Greg Lang, certificate shall serve as recognition and on the date listed below, which is to now, um, June twenty-third they were promoted. Uh, that I have promoted them to the recipient rank of sergeant for the police department presented tonight in front of council during this meeting with my thanks and appreciation, continued support, job well done so far. Don't be afraid to lean, to lean on us, rely on us to help you out. Uh, you never assume the knowledge you need automatically by putting stripes or bars on, and we know that. So let us continue to help mentor and lead you so that when we all decide to, to go and do other things, you all look better than, than we were when we left. Okay? So thank you both. There's Michelle's. And our Greg's. And again, we got some cameras, but we will take photographs. We will take photographs later. So please bring your plaques back up when we're done. All right. So moving on with some more awards. How am I doing with time, timekeeper? So right now we, we're going to present some quarterly awards to employees. And the awards that we're going to present right now are to our sworn and our civilian employees of the first and second quarter of twenty twenty four. These awards can be, um, given for nominations by their peers for any number of reasons. It, it can be a culmination of lots of things that they've done. Or in some cases, it can be one singular event that stands out that they feel noteworthy. So when we get our nominations, we try the best we can to use some discretion and apply the award in the best way we can to keep it, you know, meaningful. And we're going to present first quarter and second quarter of twenty twenty four wars right now. So if I can have Officer Art Corpus, Dispatcher Yvette Clinton, Sergeant Greg Lang, who you just met, and Dispatcher Lisa Ivy, come up to the front. So what I've got here is Yvette's plaque recognizing her as the civilian employee of the quarter for the first quarter of twenty twenty four. There's yours. And Captain Arsino has Officer Corpus's plaque for being the sworn, sworn member of the department for first quarter twenty twenty four. And Lieutenant Chris has leases for the civilian of the second quarter and then Greg's for the sworn employee of the second quarter. So thank you all very much for these continued ones. And again, we'll take pictures when we're done. Okay. So now I'm going to go back here because this one's going to be pretty impactful. All right. So I'll start, I'll start by telling you a little bit of, I guess, a story. But I don't intend it to be. It's just worked experience. It may or may not be a, a secret to you all that we carry automatic external defibrillators in our patrol vehicles. And we run medical calls a lot. Quite a bit tongue in cheek, I will tell you that there's not a cop on the planet that wants to beat a medic or a firefighter to a medical call. It's a joke, but we run to them because we're out on the road. But for the folks like me who have been around a long time, yeah, we, we've oftentimes wished that medics get there before we do. Cause that's what they do, right? I mean, we're the cops, they're the medics. They're better at any of this than we are. And every now and then we come across a set of circumstances where we get there before they do and truly walk into a life or death situation. And that happened not too long ago. So we're going to do a concurrent presentation of awards and what I'm going to ask you to do is I'm going to ask the award recipients to go into the center of the room so I can talk about them. So we'll start with Captain Arsino, who's to my right. Sergeant Wada, come on down. Dispatcher Bledsoe, come on down. And Dispatcher Lindberg, come on down. I'd also like to ask Mr. John Gensel from UC Health to join me here for just a minute. So now I'm going to introduce you to somebody who, uh, is the star of the hour really. And I will tell you that the reason why this is impactful is because I can probably count on one hand the number of times we have applied an AED in the field where it has actually told us that we have a shockable rhythm. And most of the times, and those of you who have used them, especially my folks in the back from the health services, how many times you put it on, you don't get a shockable rhythm. Uh, we don't like that. Uh, but that happens in a good majority of AED applications. However, this young man who I'll introduce to you now, if he would join me to the front, Mr. Chris AIDS, come on down, sir. Some of you in the room have seen this gentleman before. Others of you are meeting him for the first time. It is very possible that the last time you saw him, he was either on the floor or on a backboard in an ambulance. That is because during an outing at one of our local gyms, Mr. AIDS experienced a cardiac arrest and essentially went down in the middle of the establishment. So where is Mr. Brandon Heiko? He's here, I met him. Come on up, my friend. Where's Liz Bixler? I know she's here too. Come on up. Join them in the front, shall you? So these two folks who I just called up to the front of the room were already in the establishment when Mr. AIDS needed help. And they collectively applied CPR to that young man before our officers who you see here arrived to the gym. Now, while this was all going on, my two dispatchers who are in the middle, Brian and Robin, are actively working the phone call. Now, I haven't worked a bunch of phone calls on your end, but the stress level that they can experience is oftentimes worse or better than the ones we do. Because sometimes we can get to a place and actually put hands on somebody and help them. They can't. And that is a very empty feeling at times, especially during the times we get to non-shockable rhythms. However, these two fine folks were able to attend to Mr. AIDS and apply an AED inside the establishment to him. That didn't work. Now, that's not an important issue other than if you have an AED, check it. We go through a series of, of inspections all the time. Check them. However, shortly after that, Captain Arsino and Sergeant Wadham, who are actually two of the officers working the road that day. Now I'm out floating around and I'm listening to this whole thing go down. They get inside, they apply our AED from our vehicle to Mr. AIDS and get a shockable rhythm. So the rhythm is getting reestablished now while our friends from the health services district are coming on scene. Now, once you guys tank your adrenaline level, I will tell you, there's no better feeling than watching them come in the door. Okay? They have big cases of drugs and stuff that we don't have and it works wonders. But joking aside, the pieces of the puzzle worked that day. And for that, every one of you should be, should be grateful, not just Mr. AIDS. Because I can tell you, this doesn't happen a lot. So very quickly, a round of applause to all of you. So as I go down the line, I will hand them their plaques as recognition for the life-saving award, which is one of the highest awards the department has with not only this young man's appreciation, but also my own. And thank you very much. So there you are, folks. It worked. Now, I realize we're watching the clock, but oftentimes you've got something you might want to say, and I'm going to give you a chance if you'd like to say anything now before I get, before I let you go, because we got another part of this.
It takes a village to save lives. So all I can say is I'm thankful, thankful for everyone up here and the community. Thank you very much.
So don't leave, don't leave. Because now there's a second part of the award. So I'll let John take it from here, sir.
Chief, thank you. My name is John Gensel. I'm the UC Health EMS liaison or the center EMS excellence. We have a, an award that we hand out to EMS providers and that includes law enforcement and dispatchers because that's emergency medical dispatchers are the first link. That call goes in, you start giving the instructions. I've listened to those calls. I've also been the one on the other side responding to those calls. So you're a vital, important link. You get everything in motion. You tell people how to do CPR. You get people, the police officers going, you get the, uh, ambulance going, get the fire trucks going, and that's a very important thing. We have an award that we uh, hand out to those that survive sudden cardiac death. And it's called the Phoenix Award. And the Phoenix Award is, uh, from both Greek and Native American mythology. Uh, as you know, the phoenix arose from the ashes. And so tonight they're going to get a certificate as well as a challenge coin that we hand out that we created from our office and they will get that, carry that in their pocket to show that this is a vital thing that they do. So, um, Brian, I have him in order of name here. I want to thank you very much for your part in helping with Mr. Eighties, Chris's restoration of life. Robin. Thank you. I know much stress is for you guys. I've listened to those calls. Captain Arsino, right behind me. Don't sneak up on me like that. Thank you very much on behalf of UC Health. Sergeant Wadham. Thank you. I want to recognize the U-Pass Regional Health Services District medics that showed up that day. Unfortunately, um, Captain Dan, he wasn't able to attend this evening. Um, he's out saving other lives. Uh, Lindsey Doring, you were on that call. This is not the first time Lindsey's received this award up here in this community. Lindsey, you have a second coin now. Doesn't happen very often, but you have an excellent service up here. Alex Walsh. As you, Chris, you mentioned it takes a village. Everybody that was involved that day. Alex, thank you very much for being part of that team. It takes everybody to make it happen. And it started quite honestly because I teach CPR and advanced life support, both adult and pediatric. It takes the basics to save lives. And my background, as I told Mr. Eighties before, I spent twenty-five years of my career doing hearts and applying that AED, electricity's good, having something that actually shocks. And I'm, I'm proud, um, when I learned that our patrol cars up here, and I'm a resident up here, carry AEDs in their patrol car, that's a big plus. And you should be very, uh, proud and thankful for our officers doing that. Because again, they sometimes are on scene before anybody else. And I feel very safe in our community, especially now with these guys and these guys being, I mean, with all the guns, I'm going to burn rubber as I leave here.
Thank you very much, sir.
Anyway, thank you very much.
All right. Well, I heard y'all. What about those two? We're not done. So very quickly. I have a certificate of appreciation from both of you from me, and I'll read it out loud now. Certificate of appreciation and recognition of your efforts on September twenty-third of this year during an emergency call involving a cardiac arrest incident where a person was unconscious and needed medical attention. Through your combined efforts with other bystanders by providing early CPR care and first responders who arrived to the scene, the victim in this case was able to receive the care he needed and make a full recovery. And I'll add, stand right next to you. You ought to be recognized for your willingness to help someone in distress and for your commitment to doing what is right. Thank you for your efforts and partnership with my appreciation dated today. I have a certificate for both of you and one of my chief's challenge coins for you. Whether or not it works is to be determined and whether they get pulled over later, I don't know. Um, but we'll end it with that and I'll present these to you now. Thank you very much. Okay, that is all that we've got. Again, uh, I don't take this time lightly. Thank you all very much for entering, letting us entertain you uh, and highlight the work that's going on, not only with our folks, but with everybody in this community and the EMS services that make it work. So again, with my thanks, Mayor Council, folks behind me, city staff. Thank you all. And I don't know if now is a good time for pictures, Kristen, and I'm going to get out of the way. So. Um, if the recipients of the awards will come up, all of my promotions, come on up. Sergeant Camilleri's new swearing in, come on up. We'll get some group photographs and then we'll let the meeting continue. And now Kristen's on the clock, not me.
No, I'm going to go home. Right. Have a good trip.
Six zero. I was waiting for the I was waiting for things to clear out. No, there, that was a whole set of new relationships established right there for life. Can you, I had, what am I?
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is our AED? And does it work? Thank you.
You know, I had to keep.
I know, me too. I was like, I had lots of my thoughts. That was, that was amazing. I was telling them that was a whole new set of really long-term relationships established right there.
Isn't it cool?
Mm-hmm. Very cool.
Okay, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
That takes us to item four, not as much fun, but additions, deletions or corrections to the agenda, Seuss?
Yes, Mayor, we do have one this evening. As Kip mentioned earlier, we are going to remove five B, the service agreement for the reservoir from the contract, this, from the council agenda this evening.
Thank you. We'll hopefully bring it to you next council meeting. Okay?
Great. Thank you.
That takes us to five, the consent calendar council. That leaves us with one item, the approval of the October third, twenty twenty four regularly scheduled city council meeting minutes. Just need a, either questions or a move, a motion for approval, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the October third, twenty twenty four regularly scheduled city council meeting minutes.
I'll second. Thank you, council. Any further discussion? No. Seuss?
Thank you. Case?
Yes.
Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gear?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. That takes us to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone signed up, Seuss?
We do. We do. We have our first, we have two speakers this evening. Our first speaker is Claudia Miller. And I am going to pass these out to the council on behalf of Ms. Miller. Thank you.
Claudia, if you'd just share with us your full name and city of residence.
I am Claudia Miller and I live in, um, Woodland Park, Taylor County. Boy, this ceremony was really beautiful, everybody. As you probably know, my husband died August fifth. And I want to, um, emphasize how beautiful the county worked with the police department coming in when my husband was in cardiac distress. The police came, uh, when we called the dispatcher, they, my son doing the compressions right away. Immediately a policeman showed up at our door, came in, did the AED machine, knew exactly what he was doing. Within minutes from that, the paramedics came. It was so well, so professional. And, um, I just can't tell you what that meant to our family, knowing that he'd been serviced so beautifully. And Bill did not make it. He did not come back from the, uh, the cardiac arrest. But he has rested, we, our whole family rested in peace in its own way, knowing that these professionals had done everything they could. I mean, it was remarkable. Our neighbors, I mean, um, realizing what, how efficient they were. It's just a testimony to you that whether a person makes it or not. Um, it, it's so comforting to a family to know that you have that professional expertise in a small town. And I'm just so appreciative of that. And we have talked about it so many times. And it's brought us such comfort knowing they did everything they could. They were so professional. And they stayed with our family till four thirty in the morning. This happened after midnight because they knew our family was in some distress. So, thank you.
So sorry for your loss, Claudia. Pardon? Sorry for your loss.
Yeah, and you guys were great, sending me condolences and beautiful flowers. They're still alive in the basket. Appreciate that. Okay, so really, for the past two years, I've been involved with the median project, which was coordinated with our engineers. And with the change in the city council, I just wanted to propose a time, not now, but maybe sometime in the near future, where I could present some of the research that I discovered during this investigation with both Ben, Sam, and then Erin's been involved a bit with some of the, the work. So anyway, we, the project originated for the concern expressed from citizens about the need for median attention, especially since we're the gateway to the mountains going west. Throughout Colorado, various communities have themes denoting the beauty in their woodlands. And you often see this first as you're driving through the city. Considering our rich history and representations in the cultural hall mural, our U Pass Historical Center, it seemed the theme of indigenous animals would be authentic addition and a strong possibility to showcase our beautiful town. A lot of research has been put forth to locate a company with high quality, 100% bronze, handcrafted durable wildlife statues with little maintenance. They're economical and last over 50 years. I have a sheet that's been passed out that sort of summarizes some of the information that CDOT had requested. And there's specifications for artwork on highways, which is a new criteria they put out. So, as so much effort's been put forth in this project, I feel it would be beneficial to provide counsel with at least a presentation of the findings. And also, I know monies were allotted last year for part of the project, and it's a budget and time of the year. I'm hoping there's consideration to support advancement of the median project with funding. A landscaper could be involved, tree maintenance specialists, and collaboration we see ought to put our city on the map as one of beautiful landscaping and indigenous representations. In this transition in council, I'd love to work with the council and community members in sharing and brainstorming ways to enhance our medians. And it doesn't have to be the statues, though. I found them to be very viable, cost-effective, and something that I think you might like to hear more about from the extensive research that's done. So I appreciate this opportunity to share.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia, I'll give you the extras.
Thank you.
And we have someone else.
We have Ms. Rhonda Roberts.
Thank you. Rhonda, just share your full name and your city of residence, please.
Hi. My name is Rhonda Roberts, and I'm a Woodland Park, Colorado native resident. So I just wanted to invite you, Mayor Case, and all of the council members and anyone who's listening to this to a very special event that's happening tomorrow night, October the 18th, at 7 o'clock at Caris Bible College. The event's called Freedom Night in America with Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk is the executive director of Turning Point USA. He's an American conservative political author and radio talk show host and has a podcast as well. But he's gonna be here to just meet with the people. There will be speakers. I'm not sure who all will be speaking, but then he will have a question and answer time as well, where people can ask questions. So we just invite you all to come.
Thank you very much. I did receive an email invitation. Well, I don't know if you all did. Great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Debbie.
I'm so sorry. I forgot to sign up when the police all came in. That threw me into thither. So, three quick things. Debbie Miller, I live in Colorado Springs. I wanted to say first, thank you all to the city for allowing us to use the council chambers for our recent candidates forum. We had five candidates who were here, and we had about 45 people in attendance. And so it's, the video is located on our website. I also want to note that the chamber, as we have in the past, has worked on what we call our version of a blue book. It was released last week. It is also up on our website. We have paper copies as well. And it's only for the four local initiatives that will be on the Teller County ballot. And so I appreciate all the help and input that was given to us on that. And the third item is on October 24th, at the U Pass Cultural Center, from 5 to 7, the chamber is hosting a business expo. And I would encourage each and every one of you to stop by. I'd say we have 10 to 12 brand-new vendors that have never attended. And this is your way to get to know not only what businesses are located here, but what services are located here and people that can help you with different things. It's always a good evening, so we invite you to come. And we didn't do it on city council night, so hope you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Hey, Deb, sorry, real quick. What were, what was the date and time again, please?
October 24th. It's at the Cultural Center, and it will be from 5 to 7 p.m.
Thank you.
One more question, Deb. Who gave the input for the ballot issue 2A?
We got it from various different people. Then it was put before the chamber board of directors. And then it was also put, I did utilize AI on this to take subjective language out of it because it's not to be subjective, it's to be objective.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wanting to address council? All right, thank you. Now, item seven is unfinished business, which we have nothing. Item eight is ordinances on initial posting to set the public hearing, and that's approval of ordinance 1484, series 2024, on initial posting and ordinance of the City of Woodland Park City Council imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications for the establishment of a business that cultivates processes or dispenses natural medicine and the establishment of any business occupation or operation for healing centers, and set the public hearing for number 7, 2024. And if you'll remember, council, just, we, we had consensus to bring this in an ordinance so that we allow staff and our legal counsel the time to evaluate the law and to research it and bring us options with which to consider. So that's what this mor, the purpose of this moratorium is. Any discussion from you all? Otherwise, I'd just be looking for a motion.
I have a comment, Madam Mayor. The moratorium is intended to be for six months, but if we, as a council, decide that we need additional time, we will have that opportunity. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the approval of ordinance number 1484, series 2024, as written.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion, council?
Thank you. Nakai?
Yes.
Baldwin?
Yes.
Gier?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Case?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Item nine, public hearings, we have none. Item 10, new business, we have none, and that takes us to reports. And I have a couple of items. I received, we received, or I received a letter. It's addressed to me from the City of Woodland Park from the Department of the Navy, the Navy Office of Community Outreach in Millington, Tennessee. It says, Dear Mayor Case, on behalf of Rear Admiral Ryan Perry, the Navy's Chief of Information, and the men and women of the United States Navy, thank you for your personal involvement in the Colorado Springs Navy Week. Your willingness to help us connect with your community in a meaningful way was crucial to the week's overall success. Further, our sailors walked away having forged new friendships and positive experiences that I know they will cherish for years to come. While America has always been a maritime nation, connecting with Americans outside of our primary locations along the coast has traditionally been challenging. Because of your incredible and dedicated efforts, the citizens of Colorado Springs, Woodland Park, have both an increased understanding and a renewed appreciation of how the Navy has provided stability, preserved peace, and underpinned prosperity for nearly 250 years. Thank you for your assist, support, and assistance, and go Navy. Sincerely, J.J. Holland, CDR, USN. I just wanted to share that. And that takes us to community events. I have three between October 17th and November 7th. On October 24th, from 5 p.m. to 7 p.m. at the U Pass Cultural Center, the Woodland Park Chamber of Commerce is hosting the Fall 2024 Business Expo and Market. The public is invited to attend Woodland Park's largest business expo with a wide range of exhibitors. Meet face-to-face with local businesses ready to talk about a variety of products and services offered. The second is on Friday, October 25th, from 3:30 to 5 is Trick or Treat in Memorial Park. Walk about your favorite park in Woodland Park, 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 and collect candy along the way. Wear your best costume and be prepared for some sugar-filled fun. And last, on Saturday, October 26th, from 6 to 8 p.m. at the Woodland Park Aquatic Center, is the Fourth Annual Pumpkin Dive. Come dive for pumpkins, decorate pumpkins, cake walk, cake walk, and more at this fun spooky event that is kid-friendly for $10 per participant. And I know that there's also one more thing for Hallow Palooza, and that is the cornhole.
Costume cornhole.
Costume cornhole. And while the rest of the council is giving their reports, I'm gonna look up the date and time of that, unless you know.
I believe it's the same night of trick-or-treating in the park, that Friday evening.
So it's after the trick-or-treating?
Correct. Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Catherine?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome home.
I don't have anything new, but I did want to reach, shout out to Parks and Rec. We had a great ribbon-cutting ceremony at Avenger, open space on Monday. It was just, it seemed very well-planned. It was a beautiful day. So, good job. I'm so sorry.
And I, I had heard there were about 64 people there, from what I was told. That's awesome.
So since Terry stole my thunder, I have nothing else to add.
I was parking. Did we do okay?
Parking was great. We really didn't run into any issues, so.
Very good.
Carol?
I'd like to let everyone know I will be representing the mayor at a repatching ceremony for the 4th Engineer Battalion. And for those of you who've never noticed our, our plaque up here, the city has a habitual relationship with a specific battalion at Fort Carson, and that's the 4th Engineer Battalion. And over the last 10 or so years, they've gone through several metamorphoses of who they actually were subordinated to and so on. Monday, there will be a ceremony to repatch the unit. And at that point in time, Mayor Case and I really hope to reignite that relationship with that unit. Over the years, there have been several collaborative efforts between the city and the unit. And when you talk about an engineer battalion, you're talking about a battalion with a lot of capacity and capability. And I know that there have, before the Hayman Fire, for instance, that battalion, under their own training schedule and dollars, came to Woodland Park and dug and trenching perimeters around the fire to hopefully keep that fire from coming into the city limits. That's just one of the many things that battalion has done for the city. So on Monday, David Butterey and I, David is a former city manager, will be at Fort Carson and, and meeting with the new battalion commander and, and also with the division commander. So thanks for that opportunity to, to, to make that happen again, and more to follow for sure. Good unit.
Carol, wasn't David a retired lieutenant colonel, or was he?
He was. He was. He, he was a retired lieutenant colonel, but he was assigned to that battalion at one time in his career. But the, the relationship started long before David came to the city. It's, it was under a program that the Department of Defense started in 1992 where units from larger magcoms or major commands would identify a community or a city to affiliate themselves with, with. And that's been a longstanding relationship, but, you know, a couple of wars got in the way. And we're glad to have that battalion back, back at Fort Carson and hope to.
Remind me of that date again.
It's on Monday, Monday at 1300.
Thank you. I know what that means.
At the parade field, at the parade field. Thank you, Carol. George?
Unfortunately, I have nothing to report.
Q? Smitty?
I think I'm good tonight.
Thank you, sir. What's your name? Jeff. City attorney. Would you like to report anything?
I have a short report. I, I'm a history buff, and I wanted to report something I've learned recently. You know, before there were crowbars.
Oh, boy.
Crows drank alone.
We heard this one earlier today. And we paid you to come down.
So before I go to the city manager, I did receive a message from Nicole in the back that the reason the cornhole was not on my list of events was because there were only two teams that signed up, and so more than likely, that will be canceled. So we still have the pumpkin dive and the trick-or-treat. Thank you, Nicole. Go ahead, Erin.
Thank you. Thank you for not making me follow Jeff. I did want to say that our asphalt truck is finally back in service. We were having a lot of mechanical issues with it. So you will see our crews out all over the city filling potholes before we start to get colder weather. As far as Lake Street goes, we have had a number of issues with Lake Street in terms of the design. So we are hoping that they will start pouring asphalt on the 28th, but we do not have that definitive, but that, that's the hope. So we're hoping that the asphalt starts going down, not next week, but the week after. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Staff?
And for anyone that cares, it's 13-0 Broncos. Thank you.
Can I, can I take you home, real quick?
All right. Nothing else with that, we will.
Can I, can I, can I take you home, real quick? Can I take you home, real quick?
Oh, for heaven's sake.
I know.
You again?
You me again. Listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it real serious, real quick, and I'm gonna hold you over because I want to mark the date in, in the career that I've had. This is my 30th year. I've heard something tonight I've never heard. I've had an opportunity to speak with Mrs. Miller, and we were in the lobby, and she now is one of my coin holders. But the story she told tonight, I've never heard. I've never heard the other side of the family story that didn't make it. We always leave and we go. We never hear that kind of an impact. So I would just like to say thank you, ma'am, because after all the time in this business, it's stuff like that that keeps me coming back. It's now 7:18, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And thank you too, Claudia. Again, I'm sorry for your loss. Okay, with that, are we done?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
If the chief wouldn't have talked, I would have been right.